Forward and we will open with a prayer, Councilmember Bellinger.
So tonight I'd like to say a prayer that many of you know, so feel free to join with me if you'd like to. If not, that's okay too. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and as we who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order if you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not listed on the agenda. And we do have two that have signed up to speak tonight. The first is Nicole Avansik.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Avansik. I'm from the Northeast Ward. And I'm here on behalf of the Parks Advocacy League. I wanted to speak to you as to why I believe the council needs to support the certificate of obligation, especially towards the restrooms in our city parks. The City Parks Alliance, based out of Washington DC, states that city parks play a vital role in the social, economic, and physical well-being of America's cities and their residents. It encourages active lifestyles. It also strengthens the local economy. And it also increases community engagement and can reduce crime. So one of the things that makes of places or makes parks a place for the community to engage, as crazy as it sounds, is access to public restrooms. Nothing can ruin a trip to the playground faster than a kid saying, mommy, I have to go to the bathroom. So restrooms are an important factor to consider when creating a community space. So the bathrooms at Benita Creek and Lake Nakadoches are outdated and dark. Updating the bathrooms in our public parks would create an environment that would encourage people to come out to the parks, hold events, meet others, and also create a community that is healthier and more inviting in the long run. So please support the certificate of obligation, especially towards the restrooms in our city parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And also have Philip Blackburn.
Philip Blackburn. I live at 819 Logan Sports Street. I want to say a few words about the last meeting. The presentation for the COs was not in the packet. That's supposed to be available to public on Friday. So when I downloaded the packet, I didn't see anything about the COs. I didn't know what the short prioritized list for the COs was going to be until I saw the presentation. I thought that was bad form. And at one point during the presentation, it was almost like I was in a timeshare meeting. There was all this urgency to do these things. And as I look at the things on the COs, I don't see too many of them that are emergent. You know, COs were designed by the legislature for emergency situations. It's not like a meteorite hit your sewer treatment plant. Well, you don't have time to float a bond and do a bond election. Things are, time is of the essence, you have to do this. So I'm looking over these things and I don't see a whole lot of things that would, that I would put in the category of being emergencies. And so I think the way this was done was a little unusual. And when Councilmember Bellinger tried to amend the motion to have some public input into the process, it was like that was offensive. And, oh, we don't really want that. And that's kind of a mystery to me because I think we should be getting more public input into these decisions. And so it kind of backs us into the corner as far as moving forward. And so one thing that, that I put together here is a petition. I have a petition to call for a referendum where we can bring this to a vote. And I'll have this available after meeting if you'd like to sign it. And also I'm Philip Blackburn, 560-3360. Anyone out there that wants to call me? I live at 819 Logan Sports Street. You can sign this petition and the public can have a vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. All right, we will move into our agenda. And the first item there is our consent agenda. And I would ask the council if there's any items to be removed from the consent agenda. I'm assuming by your silence that there are none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, moving into the regular agenda. City council will receive staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. I'll open a public hearing to consider a request for a specific use permit to operate a tattoo salon, body piercing studio, and a B2 general business district on Lot 6A, 7, and 8, City Block 68, located at 3701, 3703, and 3705 North Street in the Northview Plaza Shopping Center. This request has been made by Stephen Bulow, case number SUP 2022-03, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Elena Helton, City Planner. As stated, the request is for an 1,800 square foot tattoo and body piercing studio in the Northview Plaza Shopping Center. The proposed location is Suite 1, which is on the southwest corner, sorry, southeast corner of the building, really located at the hard corner of West Parker and North Street. So there's no proposed construction with this request. No additional exterior improvements. Essentially, it's an interior renovation in an existing tenant space. All right, here are some photos of the location. The yellow area is actually the area where the tenant space is proposed. This is the previous location of the Army Recruiting Office, which had been there since the 80s. In 2018, they moved to a South Street location and the space has been vacant ever since. And so that's the proposed location. So it's right off North Street. Again, the property is Zoned B2 General Business, which in this district does require a specific use permit for these types of uses. And the purpose of the specific use permit is to allow the commission and council to review these requests and impose any conditions if, if necessary. The surrounding development is either primarily either zoned or developed as commercial. You have commercial on the north and south side, along North Street, on the south side of West Parker, on the other side of North Street. And then to the rear of the development, on the west side, Pearl Street extends. And then there's agricultural zone property that hasn't been developed yet. There's, there's a small structure on there, but primarily it's for agricultural purposes. This image is just an entry into the parking and shared area of the shopping center. So just wanted to give you an idea. It primarily is a large parking area flanked by buildings. And there's no additional exterior improvements. And so this project will use the existing parking in the area. And it is efficient. These are just some additional photos of some of the surrounding uses. So in the upper left-hand corner, this is property directly to the east across North Street. You have a bank, auto. There's also a retail and a check cashing place right across the street. And then on the south side, across West Parker, there's a restaurant. The conditions for approval of a specific use permit are the same ones that are outlawed in the zoning ordinance for zone change. And they include compatibility, so ensuring that the use is compatible with the adjacent developments. They include supporting facilities, making sure there's adequate drives and parking, that the requested use doesn't create any nuisances, and that there's adequate landscaping and compliance with the comprehensive plan. This property is designated as commercial on the future land use plan. So it is compliant. And the request doesn't actually change the underlying zoning. And so the property would, would remain B2 general commercial. As part of this request, we did send out written letters to 200, to property owners within 200 feet. And we also sent courtesy postcards to property owners within 500 feet. We did receive one written response, and that was in your packet. That was from the property owner of the commercial restaurant to the south. And their primary concern was the, was the concern that the future tattoo parlor might negatively impact the future tenants of the shopping center. So essentially that having a tattoo parlor in the retail center might hurt the ability to rent future spaces in that center. But that was the only concern that we, that we received. And we also had a neighborhood meeting, but we didn't have anyone in attendance for that. This item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 25th. And they did recommend approval of the request without any conditions. And we also didn't have any attendance from the public for that meeting either. Again, the request is for a tattoo and piercing salon in an existing tenant space approximately 1,800 square feet. They are proposing hours, including Monday through Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 2:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and then closed on Sunday. The applicant, Stephen Bulow, is also in attendance if the council should have any questions. And with that, I'll conclude staff's presentation and open it up for questions from the council.
Okay. Public comment, I think, is where we go next. Mr. Bulow, would you like to speak at this time or just wait for any questions?
Anything to say?
Okay, thank.
I have any further questions?
Great, thank you. Are there any public comments? Anybody want to speak to the, to the issue? Okay. Counsel, any questions? Just helping. Ms. Hockenbaum?
I just have a couple. You and I have talked about this to some degree. Do we, have we approved this sort of specific use permit for this type of business in the last little while? I mean, the last four or five years, has that happened?
Yes, the last one we did was for Casey's Tattoo Parlor on South Street. That has a specific use permit that the council approved. I can't remember exactly which year, but it was, it was in the 2000s. I think like early 2000s, maybe 2011. Some, we also have a tattoo parlor off of South Street, but it's zoned I1, I Industrial, which allows tattoo parlors by right. So that wouldn't, that one wouldn't have required a specific use permit. So those are the two that come to mind first.
I guess my other question is related to the, to the applicant. Do you have other tattoo parlors that you operate?
I do, I have one in Alaska.
That answers my questions, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Councilmember Bellinger? Any questions? Okay. Mr. Baldwin?
No questions. I'm not a tattoo person, but I don't see this as a deterrent for other businesses wanting to move in that same, in that area.
Okay. All right. Okay, I guess with that, do I have a motion?
That's Agenda Item 6A.
6A?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 6A as it is written.
All right, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. I guess I'll close that public hearing. Thank you. Okay, move to 6B. Open a public hearing to consider an ordinance to establish a school zone on Business State Highway 21 for Carpenter Elementary School.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Sam Kramer, project engineer. As you may know, the Carpenter Elementary School has moved from their old location off of Leroy Street to a new location on Highway 21 or East Main Street. Tech dot initiated a speed study. The current speed limit on Highway 21 is 50 miles an hour. They found that the best speed for that, that highway is, in a school zone, is 30 miles an hour. So they proposed a school zone of 30 miles an hour while the lights are flashing and 50 miles an hour at all other times. They didn't give us exact times, but you can expect that to be, you know, drop off and pickup times for those lights to be flashing. So the school zone will be about 1,500 feet. You can see it on the figure, it's about the off-ramps for the loop and then about west to the Arbor Pine apartment complex. So it's a Tech Dot facility. So they will install all the lights, signs, pavement markings, all of that. To take care of all of that, all we need to do is enforce it. And to enforce it, we just need an ordinance that will give the Nakadoches Police Department authority to enforce that new speed limit during those times. That's, that's about all.
Will there not be any change on the loop?
No, sir. The, the loop is actually already a school zone. It's right across from McMichael Middle School, right there.
Sufficient space already there.
It's already a school zone there, so they kind of got it covered, yes.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Any public comment or, or questions? All right, thank you. Counsel, Mr. Baldwin?
No, I was, the, you said 1,500 feet?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, when you come out of the driveway there, and if you head toward back university, there's a dip. And if you're coming from university, it's very difficult to see the top of cars that's coming out of that. Is that 1,500 feet long enough?
I, I wasn't involved in the speed study process, but they, they studied past accidents on that stretch of roadway. Tech Dot, Texas Department of Transportation did. And they, they came up with the 30 mile an hour speed limit during those times. So in, in their eyes, that is an adequate speed during those school times, yes.
Did they, I mean, I know they've done the study on accidents, but I know that was, as far as back I can remember, there was one death. And that was like 2:00 in the morning when somebody went to sleep and hit a tree.
Okay.
But my only concern is that's going to be a very busy intersection doing drop off and pickup times. And I don't see an issue coming back from stalling drives. But my concern is when you come out of the top of that drive and you're reaching the top of the hill, is that enough time to slow down? Of course, now there is a right turn lane there too also.
Yes. So, so from my understanding of transportation engineering, when they're doing speed studies like this, they take into account what's called sight distance, which is, you know, the, and that's vertical sight distance when you're talking about hills, is the distance you can see vertically to the nearest obstacle. And then your stopping speed distance, which is the, the shortest distance you can stop at a given speed. So their, their 30 miles an hour would match their, their stopping distance to their sight distance.
Yeah, and see, one of the things like, there's a right turn lane right as you get up on top of that intersection. But that wasn't to go into that street now. It was to go into a stalling drive.
Okay.
And so there's a lot of traffic going to be in that intersection at one time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions. Does the, does the city have any flexibility on that speed limit? Could we make it 25, the, the, the state minimum? And do you know if they have done a speed study on stalling drive, given that, yes, McMichael is there and the speed limit's been 30 in that range, but now we have two schools there, and so there's going to be significantly increased traffic?
No, and I, I do understand that. As far as I know, they haven't, they didn't do any further studies to, to accommodate the new school traffic. And your other question was?
Do we have flexibility in setting that?
I'll jump in, and the answer is no. When you change the speed limit on a state highway, you have to follow the speed study recommendation, so.
Thank you.
Once the study has come out with a number, you're stuck with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, will we approve Agenda Item 6B?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to C. Receive a presentation on the 2022 Texas Blueberry Festival. Wayne Mitchell, Chamber of Commerce, and Grace Handler, Blueberry Festival Committee. And Kelly, also.
Good evening, councilmembers. How are y'all today?
Great.
Good, good, good. I'm Grace Handler, Executive Director at Millard's Crossing, along her entrance. Boy, that's a shock, huh? Just joking. And the Chair of the Texas Blueberry Festival. I'm so pleased to report that through the efforts of our tireless volunteers and contributions of our community partners, the Nakadoches County Chamber of Commerce executed a successful event on June 11th. Another one, we love this. That brought joy to thousands and delivered benefits to our local businesses and nonprofit organizations. The Texas Blueberry Festival, presented by Tipton Ford, is a huge diverse mix of events with unique sights and sounds, food and culture. On the brick streets, our festival attendees enjoyed eight live entertainment acts, cooking demonstrations, and blueberry soda and sweet shop. Pie eating contests, if you didn't see that, you were missing something. It was kind of funny. Photo ops with the iconic Blueberry Festival Ford F1. And the Texas Blue Pet Parade. True Blue Pet Parade. Say that a lot of times real quick and you'll realize how hard that is to say. The Blueberry Pancake Breakfast, where the Kiwanis Club served more than 1,600 plates. That's a lot of pancakes, guys. 1,600 plates and netted $8,185 for their club projects with the help of the SFA Athletics Coaches and Athletics. Mayor Jimmy Mize and CBTS President Rusty Russ. Thank you, guys, for your help with them. The Berry Best Photo Booth gave festival guests digital and hard commemorative pics free of charge. That's pretty impressive. Somebody that wants to give out pictures, very of charge. Fresh Texas grown blueberries for sale. And Brookshire Brothers brought more than two tons of berries and completely sold out by noon. That's a lot of blueberries. The Blueberry Penny Press made available by Visit Nakadoches. Thank you to them. In Main Street's four blocks, plus the downtown square, was filled with local and out-of-town vendors and downtown merchants who literally served as a stage for the festival. I know that I've told you all this before, but coming into the festival and you look around and you start seeing the things and you ride downtown Nakadoches, our beautiful streets, and you can picture what you're going to see. That's always wonderful to me. We had more in Festival Park, including the Vehicle Fun Case Car Show, Kids' Bounce Park, Petting Zoo, and Pony Rides, and Kids' Obstacle Course, the Sasquatch Off-Road Adventure Club, and new to the festival, Aerial Acrobatic Show. And of course, we could not go without saying, the washerboard tournaments. In addition to the festival off-site events, we're in full swing. Both the Running of the Blueberries and the 42 Turnie brought participants to Nakadoches from all around the state. The run raised money for the Dog Park Nakadoches. And for the first time, the 42 Tournament was a fundraiser for our local Salvation Army. Great way to raise money. The Blueberry Festival of Quails came back in full force with a two-day show that raised funds for Nakadoches Senior Center in Love in the Name of Christ. Our friend and partner Sherry Randall at the Blueberry Place reported that 814.2 pounds of blueberries were picked that day. That's a lot more blueberries. And for the first time, pickleball was included in the festival. Their festival involvement had resulted in the Old Town Pickleball Group almost doubling in size. And here you can see that along with talking to the major partners or taking a major role with the Chamber of Commerce, the city on Nakadoches also took the opportunity to participate in the festival. Please welcome the Nakadoches County Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, Sean Wayne Mitchell, to give us some really impressive stats.
Well, thank you, Grace, and good evening, Mayor Mize and members of my Nakadoches City Council. It's an honor to be here with you. I'll start by saying this. This festival would not be, be possible without the involvement of the City of Nakadoches from everything, from, from the services the Public Works provides, all the way through to security issues and whatnot. You know, we live in a time when CEOs of chambers of commerce sweat when we put on public events. And sadly, most recently, we've seen several nationwide events that have resulted in multiple deaths. And we do everything we can to minimize that. It would not be possible without the city manager's involvement and others in this, in this community. We couldn't execute this event. I, I thank you for the opportunity, first of all, to, to visit Nakadoches for putting together some of these numbers. On the 11th of June, Nakadoches saw an estimated $481,822 in direct business sales that supported about 350 jobs here in Nakadoches and Nakadoches County. Please note that food and beverage, retail, food and lodging were big winners as well as the business services and other recreational resources and venues in, in this county. The city's net direct return, return on investment is estimated to be just under $10,000. And 1,200 tourists were estimated to fill 600 hotel rooms that night. And that's, that's a good-looking number for Nakadoches. Volunteer management and project execution under the leadership of Grace could not have been any better. I come and often refer to her as Amazing Grace. She does a wonderful job in coordinating all of these various aspects of this event. Our dozens and dozens of volunteers performed extraordinarily well and made for a great setup. The crowd size, to say the least, was massive this year. The Chamber booth reports of T-shirt sales were at record levels, and in fact, we sold out. We have no T-shirts available. The media coverage was outstanding. We saw it on two of, of the TV networks in East Texas. And the newspaper did, did an unbelievable job in the coverage. The festival's social media numbers grew significantly this year and almost doubled reach and engagement. During the month of June, the TexasBlueberryFestival.com website drew 11,500 unique visitors and 49,000 pages were viewed. Between June 1st and June 19th, the Facebook page reached 102,000 people. All over the nation, they were, they were, they were talking about us. The Nakadoches city staff and Visit Nakadoches, who would not have been more helpful or more important. The security EMT plans implemented by the city staff worked unbelievably well. We had two minor incidents that were reported to me of, of people that actually slipped or fell during that. When you think about the crowd size, that's unbelievable. We have reports from some vendors, especially food vendors, that they were out of product by 11:00 a.m. in the morning and were asking for rides down to their cars so they could go to resupply at Kroger and Brookshires and other facilities. We, at the Chamber, this year engaged a fellow named Michael Baxter, who is a consultant in the area of festivals and events to do an objective evaluation of the Blueberry Festival and the Bluegrass Concert in the park. They, they also wanted it. Let me tell you that Mr. Baxter did identify some areas that he could strengthen, especially in the area of signage and doing a better job on signage issues and directing people coming in and, and gave us some unbelievably valuable input. But having said that, overall, the, the majority of that report was unbelievably favorable from the city's involvement, security involvement, festival execution, and all of the various elements. It was, it was, it was unbelievable. And we were very proud of the fact that he was so impressed with what we've done. And that report, by the way, is available at the Chamber if anybody wants to see it. You're, you're welcome to it. I do want to close by saying you should take a peek at the, at the Bat Drone video that was taken. The link that I believe is in the resource materials that we provided you folks. It's pretty darn impressive, seeing that crowd from, from 300 or 400 feet and, and navigating this event. I believe, in my opinion, it's the best Blueberry Festival I've seen in my seven years at the Chamber. And it was an honor to have the opportunity to work with our community partners to execute that. And I will now turn it back to Amazing Grace Handler.
And I will take much more of your time. This festival would not have happened without each one of you sitting. And when I turn, I mean each one of you sitting in this room. It takes a lot of people to make a festival run. It takes our community partners, takes our city. It takes our planning. It takes our police department. Keep Nakadoches Beautiful, city officials, fire, EMT. EMT, all the things that was done with the animals this year, loved, loved, loved it. Want to see that, want to see more of that. The Chamber staff and all their work, the countless volunteers that come out and give relentlessly. And my personal note is to the city staff. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to continue and to do our great Texas Blueberry Festival, because we love it. And now, if you guys don't mind, we can all take just a short minute and come get a picture.
Let us, maybe comment. Councilmember Bellinger, any, any comments or questions?
I can't clap because I, but I think we all should clap for our Chamber staff and board and the city staff and board and Amazing Grace.
Thanks, Ms. Baldwin.
Yeah, I'm just so proud of the volunteers. It seems like every year they want to come back again. You know, I was part- You know, I, I was parting my, uh, volunteer for a while at the, at the Bluegrass Festival. And it's just amazing, really. Thank you all.
I have a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, thank you for what y'all do. I mean, it was an incredible Blueberry Festival, one of my absolute favorites, uh, that I've ever attended. And I unfortunately have gone, I think, six consecutive Blueberry Festivals without winning that Forty Two Tournament. But I keep trying, it was, it was great, the, the food there was great. It was, uh, a great opportunity for us to raise money for the Salvation Army and I'm glad that we were able to do that. I also, I'm going to throw my wife under the bus a little bit. Uh, she has worn that Blueberry Festival shirt that I had, which I wore on the day of the Blueberry Festival. But I bet that's the only time I've gotten to wear it. But I, I can't say enough how much that festival means to our community. And the people that make it possible are our city staff, Chamber of Commerce, Grace, you've done a great job. I appreciate everything that y'all do. So let me know any way that I can help in making it even better. Thank you.
And I want to echo that, you know, certainly the enthusiasm and the organization and all of the Chamber of Commerce. We're very fortunate to have you to, to, uh, put this festival on for us. And then I'd also like to mention our city departments, our police department did a wonderful job. Scott Weems and Dan Terravella were manning the, uh, the, uh, griddle, cooking, cooking blueberry pancakes that morning. Uh, fire department were there, EMS was there and ready when we had, uh, you know, issues that came up during the day. And then certainly Public Works, I mean, they just, they just took care of, of everything, kept it clean and, and kept the streets blocked and, and did all those kind of things. So we are, we are so proud of the event and again, thank you for your leadership as, as we put that on. And we'll be glad to have a picture with you.
Thank you.
And Mayor Waller, you're coming down, we do want to acknowledge Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. Let me tell you something, they're unbelievable.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Either way, either way, no, you go that way, whichever way. Perfect, there, they're right, they're blueberry. Thank you.
Mr. Waller?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to, uh, follow up with the, uh, report on the Bluegrass Concert, which is a.
I'm so sorry because I meant to mention you as well, I didn't know you were coming up, so, so thank you for doing this.
Is a compliment to the Blue, uh, Blueberry Festival the night before. Uh, this was our seventh outing and, um, it's very important to the committee. That we have a free and family friendly event. And, uh, we also wanted to go into some metrics as to how this concert benefits our community. I know, I will say at the outset that, uh, my co-chairman Angela Wiederhold is out ill, otherwise she would be here. So I'm trying to channel my inner Angela while I'm, while I'm doing this.
I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I didn't know how this all evolved until you told me at the concert. Do, do you mind sharing that or is, uh?
I, I don't mind. Um, Angela and I were in a grief, uh, support group together. And the idea of starting a concert, uh, the night before the Blueberry Festival to encourage more out of town visitors to stay overnight. We thought that was a venture worth doing and, uh, so we thought Bluegrass would be the, the perfect genre of music for, uh, for Nacogdoches. And it has turned out to be that. And the, the event has turned out to, uh, fulfill the, uh, our goals of bringing more people into town, um, so that they can spend the night. And, um, so, uh, if I could just, uh, point you to the, some of these, uh, figures. And I would, uh, thank, um, Joanna Temple with the Con- Convention and Visitors Bureau for assisting us with, uh, with these metrics. We had a attendance somewhere around thirty-five hundred. It's not a ticketed event, so that's just an estimate. We do know that our attendance was down this year from last year. And we attribute that to the early heat wave that we experienced, uh, this year. Uh, as you'll see a little bit later on, most of our, uh, attendees were there for the very first time. So the people who've been there before, we feel like are local people and, uh, they just didn't want to bear the heat that night. It was in excess of ninety-five degrees. It was about a, close to a hundred degrees and close to fifty percent humidity. It, it was brutal, it really was brutal that night, you were there.
The fans were helpful.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, but we figure a total business sales of two hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred and three room nights for local hotels, six hundred and five total visitor days and more than six thousand dollars to the tax roll. This is truly a community event. We have a presenting partner, Rex Perry Autoplex, who's been our presenting sponsor from the very beginning. This year we added additional sponsors to help us pay for, uh, the ongoing cost and the, the growing cost. As the, as the concert grows, the costs also grow. So Laird Funeral Home, RV Outfitters of Texas and Harry's Building Materials, all signed on as, as sponsors. And I just have to say, in, in this community, we've asked for many things to help us put this on and no one has ever said no. And it's just very humbling to know that the community all comes together to benefit the town in this way. Uh, our talent this year was the Baker Family, this is their fourth, uh, time to perform here. Uh, Catahoula Drive was also their fourth time. Those are regional bands, the, uh, Baker Family's from Missouri, the Catahoula Drive is from Louisiana. And then we had Little Roy and Lizzie Show, they're more of a national group and they come from Georgia. This year we decided to do something different when it, when it comes to food. We had, uh, three local caterers feed our audience. And that worked out to be much, much shorter wait times for food. So we intend to do that in the, in the future. Uh, we feel like this event raises the profile of Nacogdoches. We, uh, promote, uh, the Blueberry, Bluegrass Concert and many, uh, national Bluegrass Forums at other Bluegrass Festivals across the nation. And, and I have to give credit to, uh, Point A Media, since Angela is not here tonight, they do a fantastic job of promoting, uh, our event on social media. Uh, we figure that our, uh, Facebook page reached a total of seventy thousand individuals with four thousand page visits. Our Facebook event page reached a total of sixteen thousand individuals. We also do Facebook and Google advertising. The, uh, Facebook advertising had sixty-two thousand impressions, four thousand clicks. Google advertising had over three hundred thousand impressions and, uh, thirty-five hundred clicks. Uh, we do a survey just to find out where the attendees are coming from. And we were able to determine, uh, we had two hundred and seventeen completed surveys and we feel like that's an adequate number for a statistical sampling. That forty-seven percent are from Nacogdoches County, fifty-three percent are from outside of Nacogdoches County. So more than half came from outside Nacogdoches County, we feel really good about that. And of those two hundred and seventeen surveys, twenty-five percent were visitors staying overnight. And six percent were here for the very first time ever. Of those two hundred and seventeen, ten percent stayed with family and friends and thirteen percent stayed in hotels. Uh, three point seven percent stayed in bed and breakfast and one point four percent stayed in RV parks. The average number of nights stayed was three point four. So a lot of those people from out of town decided to make a weekend of it, in some cases make a week out of it. So we want to thank, uh, many of the people who made this possible, the city of Nacogdoches, Parks and Recreation, uh, Public Works. The Street Department, City, uh, Fire Department, uh, Police Department, as was said earlier, it couldn't be done without them. Uh, Motor Homes of Texas, the Alumni Association at SFA First Baptist Church. Uh, the county plays a big role with the reserve deputies doing parking and then the sheriff and the jailers. The trustees, uh, helping clean up and of course, our Chamber of Commerce and our, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we also appreciate the council's support for future pro- plans to upgrade the infrastructure and facilities. At Festival Park for future events such as this. I want to recognize our organizing committee, Angela, uh, Wiederhold, Scarlett Long, Claire Robbins, Cindy Millard, Lindsay Rodriguez and Joanna Temple. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. And again, I want to, I, I just want to bring certain attention to you. You're, you and Angela had a vision of what could be for Nacogdoches. And then the others came alongside of you and then you've created this. And I, I'm, I'm just so proud to know that. I mean, I know you've all had a good association in your past with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm sure that's kind of where it comes from. But just the, just the passion and going to these festivals and learning about it and getting the connection to get the people to come to Nacogdoches, that's what we all have to do. So, so we, we thank you so much for that. Counsel, any other comments? Thank you.
I'll, I'll also echo that and say thank you, Scott, for what you do for our community.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move forward to D, consider approval of an ordinance to establish a freeze on ad valorem property taxes for resident home, residence homesteads of individuals sixty-five years of age or older. Or a disabled person, Director of Finance.
Mayor, Council, and tonight before you, you have an ordinance that will implement a tax ceiling for over sixty-five. And disabled persons within the city of Nacogdoches for their homestead. Um, just as a recap from what we discussed, um, last week or last council meeting, um, just a little bit about what the tax ceiling is. Um, the, the Texas Property Tax Code does allow for us to implement a homestead tax ceiling for taxpayers sixty-five or older or disabled. It sets a limit on the amount of taxes that you must pay on your residence. If you qualify, city property taxes on that residence homestead cannot increase as long as you own and live in that home. The tax ceiling is the amount that you pay in the year that you qualified at the age of sixty-five or older or the disabled person exemption. The city taxes on your homestead, um, may go below, but not above the ceiling amount. Um, the only caveat to that is if you improve the residence homestead, the tax ceiling may go higher because of the new additions to your property. This only applies to the taxpayer's homestead, not other properties owned within the city. This tax ceiling amount will be set based on the tax due for the twenty-twenty-two's tax year. So that means when we set the tax rate on September the thirteenth of twenty-twenty-two. And those taxes are billed in October, which will be due in January, that will be year one of the tax ceiling. So in year two, the twenty-twenty-three taxes, they will not go above the, the amount of the twenty-twenty-two taxes. So that, that is very important here, we are implementing it now, but twenty-twenty-two taxes will be year one. Uh, of course, we will be, um, asking you to implement this by ordinance. And understand that once this is enacted, the ceiling, tax ceiling cannot be repealed. Um, this is just, and I don't have my glasses on, hold on. Um, this is just a, um, look at the number of, of residence homesteads by both sixty-five and disabled. And the value for the last several years. Um, and this was our, 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 Jason and, um, I at the appraisal district kind of went back and looked at. What would have happened had the tax ceiling been in place in prior years? Because it's very difficult to forecast future years, but we can tell you what happened in prior years. And so even when the, the values were flat, there was a five hundredths of a penny increase in the no new revenue rate. Um, in twenty-twenty and then values rose in twenty-twenty-one. And there was three hundredths of a penny in, decrease in that year. So if you, although future impact is unknown, by looking at past history, it looks like it's a very slight, um, difference in the no new revenue rate. By implementing this, this tax ceiling. So, um, same thing with future debt issuances in the, in the future. Any increase in that amount would be redistributed with other rate classes, just, just as everything with the tax ceiling is. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay. Count, Councilmembers, uh, come in, Councilmember Bellinger, can you come in?
I just had one, uh, small question. Um, the wording in the, uh, ordinance talks about a freeze and the other wording is a ceiling. But then the ordinance goes on to say that it could drop. Does it make a difference? That's what I was going to call you about, Mr. Kirkland, but, um.
Yes.
I just was curious and I thought, well, because the rest of the ordinance talks about that it. Right. Because it, later on, the ordinance explains that, you know, it can drop again. But the calling it a freeze, I just want to make sure it won't, it won't disallow it to drop. I think it doesn't after I read it, but.
So the ordinance specifies that it's governed by the provisions of eleven two sixty-one, which is the tax code. Which talks about the various ways that the freeze is implemented. Once it's granted, it stays, but if they improve the property, then that's an add, addition to value that is not included in the freeze.
Yeah, all I'm concerned about is if our taxes go down, I want to be sure that the taxes can go down. That's why it's the ceiling as opposed to a.
No, it follows the, yeah, it follows the rate, yeah.
All right, just wanted to be.
Anyone else?
No, I don't have any objections.
Anything?
All I have is to make a motion that we approve the ordinance in item sixty.
All right, have a second.
The motion?
Have a second, okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to E, consider approval of an amendment to ordinance section ninety-four dash eighty-one to increase the exemption. To ad valorem property taxes for resident homesteads of persons over sixty-five years of age in the city of Nacogdoches.
Again, so this will also is going to be two ordinances, we'll take them separately, but I'm going to have one presentation. Because, um, our existing ordinance, um, has the exemption that exists, the twenty thousand dollars. As two separate items in, in two separate sections in the ordinance, one for the over sixty-five and one for the disabled. And so we actually will have two, two ordinance votes. But, um, again, just as, as a reminder, um, the Texas Property Tax Code does allow for an additional exemption for taxpayers. Sixty-five or older or disabled, only appozed to the taxpayer's homestead, not other properties owned within the city. The city currently offers a twenty thousand dollar exemption in both over sixty-five and disabled persons categories. City council may increase or decrease this exemption by resolution or ordinance. And future, future exemption changes are allowed under law. So this can go up and down as, as you see fit. Um, this again, we had to kind of go back and look at how this would have affected us in prior years, not knowing how the, the, the future is going to look. And so based on the estimated increase of going from a twenty thousand dollar exemption to a forty thousand dollar exemption. The no new revenue rate would be increased by approximately a penny and a half for all rate classes. That includes the over sixty-five and disabled persons as well. The exemption increases, but the tax rate also increases for that, those rate classes. So based on last year's, um, tax values, it would have been about a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar impact. Of, of taxes that would be redistributed over all the rate classes. Um, this was just a comparison of the city of Nacogdoches, the county, um, the ISDs in both Lufkin. And, and Nacogdoches kind of showing who has what. And, um, you know, what, which, which cities have which exemptions and, and the counties and the ISDs as well. So here again, the last couple of years with the twenty-twenty-two taxes. Had this been in place then, would have been about a one point six penny increase in the no new revenue rate. And then in twenty-twenty-one would have been about a one point five. Now, I say their future impact is unknown. But since then, we have been working, of course, with this year's property tax rates. Um, what we're going to present to you in a few minutes does not include any of this because the appraisal district cannot, um, calculate tax rates. Until y'all actually have approved, um, the ordinances. But based on preliminary numbers, it looks like about a one point two to a one point three percent, uh, penny increase. For twenty-twenty-two is what we're looking at for this year. And that's it.
Okay, is there any public comment? Okay. Any counsel comment? Councilmember? Bowden?
Just, I notice it doesn't seem like an issue to some of us that this is. Just, I notice doesn't seem like an issue to some of us that this is, we can pay this what, as it stands right today, but this is beneficial to, to a lot of low-income homeowners that's surviving day-to-day. So, I mean, I, I approve of uh, agenda six, E and F.
Okay. Councilmember Bellinger?
No comments you want me to make, okay?
Absolutely.
So I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to ordinance section ninety-four-eighty-one to increase the exemption to ad valorem property taxes for residence homesteads of persons over sixty-five years of age in the city of Nacogdoches.
Have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, move on to six F. Consider approval of amendment to ordinance section ninety-four dash eighty-two to increase the ad, exemption to ad valorem property taxes for residence homesteads of disabled persons in the city of Nacogdoches.
Same thing, just two separate ordinances. As I mentioned before, our current ordinance splits the twenty thousand exemption in two se- sections, the over sixty-five and the disabled. So what you just passed was the ordinance for the over sixty-five, no, the disabled. This will be the disabled.
Is there any public comment? Okay, council members, any comment?
I, I have to say this. I, I met with a constituent back in May. Uh, Mr. Canizares and I had to go back and forth on uh, getting her in contact with the Central Appraisal District. And she was having to make those decisions, Mr. Bolden, on whether she pays her property taxes or whether she pays her electricity. And so this is a way to provide relief to individuals in my ward and your ward and across our city.
Anybody else? Motion? Do you have a motion?
Sure. Um, I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to ordinance section ninety-four dash eighty-two to increase the exemption to ad valorem taxes for residence homesteads of disabled persons in the city of Nacogdoches.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden, all right. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move to G. Presentation of proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and calculated property tax rates. Director Finance.
So to start off with, we're gonna talk property tax rates a little bit. Um, just as a reminder, since we have um, some new council members that were not here um, last year during this process, and a couple, several years ago, the state passed Senate Bill Two, which changed the um, property taxing for the state pretty significantly. Um, one of those things is that it reduced the um, tax increase limit from eight percent to three-and-a-half percent. That's the, the um, additional amount of M and O rate that we can, um, that we can go without having to uh, go to the voters. And so that is, that is part of the, the, probably the largest part of that Senate Bill Two. It also changed the ta, the terminology in the past. Uh, we were all really used to effective tax rate and rollback rate. That has changed now to the no new, no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. And then they also implemented what is called an increment work, increment rate, so that each year, the difference between the adopted tax rate and the voter approval rate, you can carry over for up to three years. So if the voter approval rate was sixty-five cents and we adopted sixty-four cents, they have a penny for that year that we can roll over. So what that does is that allows you, for those three years, if you want to use a portion of the, of the prior year increment rate, it allows us to go above that three-and-a-half percent limit. And so if we have a, a year that we have some, some severe issues and we need um, additional revenue, that does give us the ability to, to raise taxes above that three-and-a-half percent mark um, if we need to. And so um, we are in the second year of that increment rate. It started in twenty-nineteen, but that was the effective first year with nothing. And so we only have two of those um, that we have banked in twenty and twenty-one. So you'll notice that these numbers are in red, and that is because by the action that we just took in items E and F and D and, D and E and F, um, these numbers are no longer valid. And so um, these numbers will change. Um, like I said earlier, the appraisal district um, had to calculate and give me values based on what it was as of this morning, not, not in anticipation of that vote. And so as of tomorrow, we will, we will provide the appraisal district with these, these signed ordinances, and then they will um, recalculate and submit new rates. Um, the assessed value currently is a little over two-point-one billion dollars. That is up from a little over one-point-eight billion last year, so we had a, a pretty significant increase in, in taxable value. We also had forty-three point four million dollars in new property added to the tax roll this year. And if you'll, remember, the, the way the, the new value works is that is pulled out of your assessed value to create your no new revenue rate. So basically what that is, is that gives you um, new monies uh, each year. Now next year, it'll be rolled in and it will be part of the calculation for the no new revenue rate, but for year one, new value gives you basically new, new revenue for that year. Our current, which for twenty-two will be the prior, but the current tax rate now is sixty-one point six cents. Uh, the no new revenue rate calculated prior to tonight's action was fifty-four point six-two-nine cents, and the voter approval rate at sixty-point-six-four-two cents. Now, we have done some preliminary, just rough numbers, and like I said, I think it's gonna go up at least a penny and two, maybe a penny-three. Um, but Jason at the appraisal district has not um, run those numbers yet, and so we'll, we will update you with, with the new rates um, after the, the ordinances are submitted to the appraisal district. So this also will change. Um, the proposed tax rate is fifty-six point one-one-one per hundred dollar valuation, which gives us three-point-four, uh, but almost three-point-four million in O N M and one-point-six million um, in debt. This generates five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars in new revenue. Of that, two-hundred-and-eighty-three, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand of that comes from that forty-five million dollars worth of new value that was added this year. Again, these rates will go up based on um, the exemption that will be applied um, tomorrow. So what does that mean for an average home value um, tax-wise? And so the one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar is after exemptions. That is from the appraisal district. That is the average value of the homesteads um, in the Nac, in, in the city of Nacogdoches. So taking that amount times the proposed tax rate of fifty-six point one-one-one, oh, I missed a slash, sorry, uh, that's six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and ninety cents. Comparing that to the no new revenue rate of fifty-four point six-two-nine cents is six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, a difference of seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents um, in increase in annual tax liability. So let's talk general fund for a minute. So general fund revenues, I'm gonna flip over here because I can't see. Um, general fund revenues this year is going to be proposed at around twenty-eight point four million dollars. This is operational revenues only. Um, of that, uh, of course, property taxes make up thirty-seven percent, sales taxes twenty-seven percent, um, franchise fees eight percent, inter-fund transfers twenty, and then the other revenues are eight percent. So that other is court fines, recreation fees, library fees. So you'll see that the majority of the general fund is supported by property and sales tax, um, and then of course, uh, to a lesser degree, the franchise fee and the inter-fund transfers. On the expenditure side, um, of course, the, the expenditures, of course, will be twenty-eight point three uh, million as well. Public safety, when looking at it by function, um, is fifty-nine percent of that budget. General government, which includes finance, um, city secretary, uh, legal, those, those types of areas will cover um, about twenty-four percent of the budget. Uh, cultural and recreation, parks, libraries, um, historic sites is eleven percent. Highways, which was our street department and public works administration is five percent. And then the inter-fund transfers um, is about one percent of the, of the expenditures. Now, looking at those same expenditures by classification, you'll see that seventy-eight, I'm sorry, I'm blind, seventy-eight percent um, of our general fund expenditures are personnel related. And so this is all personnel cost all in. This is salaries, it's taxes, it's TMRS, it's health insurance, it's, it's everything wrapped up in, in personnel costs is about seventy-eight percent of the general fund budget. And then as to a lesser degree, supplies and materials, which is fuel, um, contractual services, which covers maintenance contracts on software, it covers um, travel and training, it covers um, electricity. Those types of things are eleven percent, and then smaller to uh, one and two percent for inter-fund transfers and send recharges, which is, um, that is the payments to the equipment replacement fund. This year, the departments had requested quite a few items of capital items, capital projects, different things that we had gone through um, as they presented to y'all the budgets over, over the course of a couple of meetings. These are the items that we are proposing to be included. These, of course, are not operational. These are going to be funded with reserves. Um, and so uh, capital equipment and projects, a little over one-point-six million dollars. There's several servers and softwares um, for, for various departments that total eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, facility renovations of a hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, various parks and rec, equipment of forty-two thousand dollars. Um, equipment for the street department, a hundred-and-two thousand dollars. Uh, the planning and zoning department, a development, um, plan development assessment. And then um, we actually also are wanting to create a building maintenance replacement fund. We have a replacement fund um, for vehicles, police cars are, are purchased there, um, parks and wrecks, um, vehicles and some of their mowers are there. Um, we have been seeing a significant increase in the number of, of building, large building maintenance items that come up um, during the year, air conditioning units going out that are not budgeted. And so this is a way for us to kinda control the budget on those items, is to set up a basically a sinking fund for those, so that when a air conditioning unit does go out, um, we have funding to go ahead and replace that, um, and, and we don't have to wait until um, a time that we can bring y'all a budget amendment for those items, so that we can get that equipment replaced um, expeditiously. Um, another item that is included in there is the sign-on bonuses for um, police and dispatch of seventy-four thousand dollars. The employee retention payments that we discussed at the last meeting, a total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three, and that is for the payments, the TMRS and the associated uh, social security and Medicare, and that is citywide. And then also a text dot um, grant in the airport. Um, this is our match. It was a one-point-five million dollar grant um, that the airport has, and the, the city match would have to come from the general fund, because the airport construction fund does not generate any revenue of its own. Um, the capital improvement plan, um, here, um, is the CO bonded projects that we discussed last time, which includes the new central fire station, drainage, streets and parks, as well as fire station maintenance for the three stations that are not included in the, in the combining for the new central fire station of five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars, parks projects of seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and then our annual street rehab of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that, um, by ordinance, we have to continue to fund that. Um, that is the ordinance that was, we set up the street maintenance fund. And so as part of that, it was, we could not supplant the, the budget by eliminating the general fund's contribution. So that, that is a item that must stay in there per ordinance. So that is all of general funds. So before we jump funds, if y'all want to ask questions, we can, or we can jump on, however you wanna do it.
I have several questions, but, sorry, it takes me a while to turn the pages now. So I had a question about, I have several questions, but first of all, um, where is this particular document available to the public right now?
It's, it's on the website right now.
On which, on?
On our, the city's website, on the Budget Process.
Budget Process.
On the homepage, we have a button. It says Budget Process. It's a big green button, and everything is there.
Okay, and is there a way to um, also included in, in uh, where this particular meeting is located, as one of the supplemental, um, and including the, okay, and I would also like to include um, the, the um, PowerPoints that were presented at the last meeting. People have been trying to find them.
They're, they're on the Budget Process page as well.
Right, but if they can be included on, on the July nineteenth meeting as handouts or something. I think it's, it's really difficult to all of a sudden be presented with all this, and I know you're, you have a difficult job too, but, um, and not to be able to see it ahead of time to even
Well, and I understand that. Unfortunately, this is, today was the due date for the, for the budget. We literally finished it this morning about ten o'clock. So there, there, at this, at this stage, this is, this is not one that is ever a, available prior. Now going forward, it will always be available prior, but
Even in a draft form, I mean, without all the pictures and everything, even just
This did not exist before Sunday. I promise, it did not exist before Sunday. This was, this was all put together Sunday. This is all on our computers. And so this is a whole separate document, unfortunately. So um, yeah, I, I would have loved to have been able to give it to you earlier. It just didn't exist in this format.
Okay, well, so um, some of my questions are probably ones that, where, where does the income, um, when, for example, our police uh, do work um, that is for another police agency and we get the reimbursement back? Where do those dollars come? Where do those get cooked?
So the, those are going to be um, in intergovernmental receipts. They have their own line item. And so that is the same place that grants or any of those types of things come in. And so um, for police, let's say they have overtime if they work for um, either ICE or IRS. The, the overtime that they work, working their jobs, they submit to the IRS and to ICE, and then we're reimbursed for it. So those overtime expenditures are reflected in their department overtime budget. And then when they reimburse us, the money comes in and is reflected in intergovernmental receipts.
So they look like personnel costs?
They are personnel costs, yes.
Okay, but then they come back in and their dollars are used in the general fund? Is that what happens? How do we use those dollars?
Those, those dollars, okay. So if we have a hundred dollar overtime budget for the police department, that overtime is for city-funded overtime for us to do our projects. When they have to work for another agency, it goes above that hundred dollars. And so they, maybe we spent two hundred dollars, okay? And so there is an overture in the expenditure, but there is an offset in additional revenue that was not um, anticipated. So we don't budget for those per se. They come in as we work, and the money comes in, they wash themselves. That money is not used for something else. That money that comes in literally covers the overage in those personnel costs. The same thing happens with fire.
Okay, and so it's reported as personnel and it's used
Yes.
To pay that?
They offset, yes.
Okay, same with fire, okay. Um, other people can ask questions while I'm looking at my other ones. I've got about four of them.
That's in, on that uh, proposed operational revenue, that's in that other, other revenues eight percent, is that where that money come?
That, that would be in, yes, that, sorry, that would be in other. But like I said, we don't, we do not um, we do not budget for those unknown things. Now, the only thing that we would budget for is um, like the step grant that the police departments are running right now, those three, because we know we have a set contracted amount not to exceed. And so those things we know. We don't know when fire gets deployed, how many times are gonna go, how much they are. And so as you'll remember, several meetings ago, we had budget amendments to reflect those monies coming in and those monies going out for the fire deployments. And so that's not something that we budget beforehand, because we may have a year that we don't have any fire deployments, and then this year, we've got almost a million dollars worth of them. And so those are not things that we budget as an operating ongoing expense and revenue.
And we don't make any money on that?
We, we do not make any money on, that, that's a one-to-one match on the, the travel cost, the personnel cost. Now, they do reimburse us for use of our equipment, and they, they do it on a flat rate. And so um, there's no offsetting expenditure for that on the books, because our, our vehicles are our vehicles. And so what we do with that money is that money is taken and, and deposited into the equipment replacement fund to help fund future replacement of those fire engines, because they are being used and, you know, you know, you would think, the more that they're used, the more depreciating there, that, that's happening, that's not city use. And so that's, that's why we put it in there to help fund the replacement of that vehicle at some point in the future. But that would be the only thing that would not be a direct um, reimbursement. That might be a little more than, than normal, but we do not lose money on that.
Just one quick question. You said, uh, on Senate Bill Two?
Mm-hmm.
You stated that the limit tax increase was three-point-five, but at some time, if there was issue, you could go one percent above that?
Well, no, you can, you can use your increment rate, and so that depends. So like, um, for us, So, like, for us, our increment rate, it's in the very, very back, let me see. The increment rate that we carried over from 2020, the unused amount was almost 1.8 cents. And then, last year, we carried over almost 2.2 cents. And so, we actually have the ability, that increases your voter approval rate by almost 4 cents.
Voter's approval rate, right?
That increases, yeah, that increases the amount before we have to go to the voters. Right, right.
That's good, thank you.
So, okay, back to the extra, I mean, the one we lend our firemen out and all that. Do they, do they actually get, they get paid their salary from us and then they get paid overtime? Are they working all the same hours, or are there some hours that are replaced by lending them to these important tasks?
Right, yeah, no, definitely. It's a good question. So, what happens is the firemen that are sent on the deployment, their time is reimbursed for all the time that they work, the majority of that's going to end up being overtime. But all the time they work, they reimburse 100% of that, but they also do backfill. So, when we have 10 firemen that are not here, 10 firemen have to come in off shift and cover their normal shifts. And so, that backfill is also part of what we submit for reimbursement. So, that, so there really is no, there is no cost to the city for us to participate in this, because they pay the firemen that go and then they pay the firemen that cover for the firemen that go, if that makes sense.
So, there's no cost, but there's no income also? Is that correct, except for the fire equipment?
No, 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 yeah, no, there's no profit. They cover the cost 100%. The only profit per se would be for the equipment, and that's what we put in the equipment replacement fund.
I have another, do you want to, I don't know if you have a question? Okay. So, another one of my questions is the $300,000 inflation bonus that we gave last year. Is that included in personnel costs, or is that somewhere else?
So, that's not part of the budget. That was a personnel cost, but it was done out of reserves.
So, we don't see it as personnel cost?
Well, it's not in next year's budget, because...
No, but in last year's. Will it be shown as personnel cost, or is it shown as something else?
Yes, it is personnel cost, in the committed reserves account.
So, those reserves, they could have been spent on anything, they're just spent, okay? And they show up there, okay?
You threw me off just a minute ago, when the firemen, when they are paid, if they go out, venture outside of Nacogdoches. That salary, while they're there, is being paid.
Yes.
And then, the backfill?
The backfill.
Is also being paid. So, we don't really lose any funding, okay?
Mr. Huckabee, you have, join in.
I'm still trying to figure out what I'm doing.
I still have more. Do you have more?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, the 823,109 employee retention payment that's included there is for all employees, correct?
All full-time employees.
And that will be shown in a personnel cost, if we did? And do we have any trouble retaining, like administrative level staff and above?
Like executive staff, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, so far, when I've been listening to the, we have two places where we have a lot of trouble recruiting and retaining. And one is the people who drive our trucks and people who take care of the garbage, and the other is our police department. And I, I'm not sure why we're doing an across-the-board recruitment and retention when this $823,109, if it were targeted. First of all, it comes out of reserve, so that could cover a lot of other issues that we have pending, in fact, some of the things we intend to borrow money for. But, but I don't see how we're not, I see the $74,000 as the police sign-on bonuses, but I don't see that $823,000 targeting the people who we need to recruit and retain.
So, that's not a recruitment, that is definitely just a retention tool. I can't tell you who we're going to lose tomorrow. I will tell you that our entire executive staff are vested and can retire. Well, maybe not the entire staff, I think Elena's not. But, yeah, we don't know who's going to leave when. The intent of the retention payment was to try to alleviate and not have some of those losses in every department that we are experiencing in the police department and, of course, in public works in several areas there too. So, the retention payment was a preemptive step to keep us from losing people that are, right now, there's jobs everywhere. People are looking, actively looking. And so, that's what we are hoping, that that will help retain the people that will stop looking elsewhere, because if they do that, then we're going to come back and have to ask for recruitment num, dollars for across the board as well. So, that's kind of the intent there.
Well, let me take a preemptive step myself and say that I would really appreciate when you do the budget. We have a problem with retention, since this is retention, we have a serious problem with retaining our police officers. And I would like to see even more than the sign-on bonuses and even more than the pay for specific, I forget what that's called.
Assignment?
Assignment pay. I would like to see very, very specific now retention dollars for the police. I'm very concerned, being down so many police officers, particularly police officers who've been here 10 years or more. I know the STEP system is a way to go ahead. And then, also, I understand that STEP system will prob, could help us recruit officers who are experienced from other places. So, if we are going to put dollars into employee retention, I would like to see them focused on the employees who are leaving. I know we can't guess, but we can surely see from the past what retention issues we have that are serious.
So, just as a reminder, the police officers, all of them are over the $50,000 threshold for the top amount. But we, as part of this 823, we propose that all of those officers, the police officers and detectives, would get at the higher level, like they were below the $50,000 threshold. So, that would be for them, instead of the 1950 annual payment, it would be 2,600.
That's, well, you already know what I think, so...
So, but this is for employees making 50,000 or less, plus...
So, there's, it's tiered. So, any employee under 50,000 is eligible for $2,600 annual payment. We're going to pay it on four quarterly pieces. That's equivalent to $100 per pay period, is where that number came from, because we have 26 pay periods. The people that are between 50 and 75 are eligible for $75 a pay period, which equates to $1,950 annually. And then, anybody above 75,000 is eligible for $50 per pay period, which equates to $1,300 annually. And that's where the $823,000 comes from.
And then, the police are added in?
And the police, any of those police officer detective positions, they are, they all are at like 55, 56, we added them back down to the under 50, so that they, instead of getting 1950, they get the 2,600.
So, let me clarify also, this shouldn't be coming out of our reserves. This is a personnel cost that we should be budgeting in. We shouldn't be doing just these quarterly drop, because I think as Mr. Bolden said last time, just having a quarterly bonus isn't something that actually retains people, because they don't know what they're going to get or when they get it. But I would like to see that taken out, I mean, not being taken from the reserves, made whatever, I don't think we need the 823,000, but I think we need to actually take a hard look at what we need to do to retain the police officers, and that needs to be included in this budget as a regular budget item. Mr. Canizares, did you want to come up here? Do you want to come up here to speak, please?
No, I can sit right here.
Could you please come up?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Remember, I'm old and blind, I can't see very well.
So, just clarification, so if we have a department that has, say, no vacancies, Parks Department, should they be included in this number or no? Our Parks employees, they're our lowest-paid employees, many of our field employees are some of our, the ones that are affecting the most, majority of this is affecting them, because we tiered it, as Ms. Carbo said, is for people making 49, 99 and less. So, you're right, we absolutely have major vacancies in the police department, there is absolutely no doubt that we have to address that. I think we are with, not only the sign-on incentive, the council most graciously allowed us to go ahead and proceed with that last council meeting, and we're proceeding with that, also with this component, and also with the assignment pay, which adds substantial dollars into police officers, not only new officers, but also experienced officers as well. So, we need direction from council as to how you, from the council directly, is how you want us to disperse these funds. There is no doubt that we have an issue with police departments. That's happening across the country, not just in Nacogdoches, Texas. So, but we have departments where we may not have any vacancies, and we're fortunate, but they also are some of our lower-paid employees. And so, really, what we're looking for is if you don't want to provide monies for employees because of just some of the issues we've had with inflation and the other cost increases, we just need to know which thresholds you feel most comfortable funding and which thresholds you don't feel comfortable funding. And really, we can move along. Now, if we want to add this to the budget, then again, that is a tax increase. And so, that competes with some of the other costs that we're proposing to you as part of new programs. This is not, while, yes, technically considered new, but the premise that we had is, we are going through a temporary inflationary issue. I have no idea when this is going to end. I mean, we can talk monetary policy all day long, and the feds are doing things to kind of control that, but the thinking that we had here was to try to bide some time to draw down on some existing reserves that we had, but to also provide some relief for existing employees. If we want to compound that, meaning it's baked into your budget going forward, we can certainly do that, but it's extremely expensive, because not only are you increasing the, you know, whatever the equivalent of that salary or that wage based on this increase, you're not going to take that away. So, the intent was bridge the gap for this next 12 to 14, 15 months with these dollars and reassess next year. I mean, that's really the intent. We know we need to do something, but we also know that this year's budget had huge increases in fuel, huge increases in electricity, and all the supply chain issues that we're all plagued with. So, if we need to compound the issue as far as adding that into employee salaries, we can certainly do that, but it's going to come at a tax increase.
I think, I mean, this is a very common approach. We have made three payments at the bank doing the same thing, just taking money out and paying our employees to help them get through these tough times with 9% inflation. Hopefully, we're going to see inflation with this back down in the 4% and 5% range, it's not going to go away completely, I don't think. But we've got to help them through these times, and it's what business is doing, and I mean, and that's what we are, rather than putting in a permanent increase that we're going to work off of and it's going to multiply over the years to come. We may have to do that at some time, but right now, we're using a stopgap measure to get us through to the next budget.
So, we're just looking for direction. If this is not appropriate, tell us what is.
I have, Mr. Canizares, come here, please. You're asking some questions, I was going to answer them, but other people might have answers also, but, so first of all, you asked us about reserves, how you want us to dispense with reserves, right? I was having to write down your questions, I forget what we... So, I think reserves were set aside for water, sewer, that's what they were set aside for initially.
Not in the general fund, no ma'am.
Well, and other repairs, road repairs, so I'm sorry, that will, and road repairs, I know we were talking about borrowing, so our reserves were set aside for those things, and also for building issues. So, that's why our reserves were set aside. So, I would like to use our reserves for what they were set aside for.
Well, reserves are typically set aside for one-time, non-recurring things.
That's right.
So, what we're saying is this retention incentive is a one-time, we can call it recurring because of how it's dispersed to employees, but it's intended to be funded only for fiscal year '22, '23, from October 1st through September 30th, and it goes away. It doesn't mean that we won't be addressing employee compensation a year from now, but it's not intended to be, for this to be compounded. So, you're right, cities can use reserves a number of different ways. You can use, certainly you've got some cities, and I would not recommend it, that use reserves to ongoing operations. That is recipe for disaster. Fortunately, we have a really great finance director and a great counsel current and past that would not allow that, and that's not ever something that we would ever continue or ever recommend. But these projects that you have before you are one-time, non-recurring things, whether it's to implement a streets program or to buy a piece of software one-time, or, well, not software, because there are ongoing costs for that, but the initial outlay and then you bake in your operation costs for ongoing maintenance. But everything that you see here are considered one-time, non-recurring type items. And so, again, it's just how you all want to use the reserves, that's really up to the council.
Now, in reserves, we're talking about COVID relief and the stimulus money, is that, is that...
Well, it's a combination of not the stimulus, not the ARPA monies, those ARPs are set aside for something else.
Right.
But, but based on, and again, Pam can answer better than I can, but those are reserves, are basically excess revenues over expenditures that have accumulated over the years.
Yeah, and actually, we used $4 million in reserves over the last year, right? We reduced our reserves by $4 million, I think, last year.
I bet I think we also have our highest reserves ever, but those are carryovers.
Okay, well, let me drop that.
Let's hear about that, about the $4 million.
So, what you're talking about is the difference between the reserves at the end of last year, that I showed you at 12 million. That was pending $4 million worth of carryover. So, we have existing CIP and capital projects that are budgeted currently, that in order for me to calculate what our estimated beginning balance is going to be, I have to worry with those carryovers, because they're not included in this budget. They're in the current year, but we have to carry them over. And so, reserve did not decrease by $4 million. They were just carried to the next year, so that they're in this year with all of these items, plus what we did not spend in the prior years.
Okay. Well, it's hard to figure out how much reserves we're using every year, but I'll just put that aside. But I do have a preference that reserves are used for one-time only. I'm not sure that this stopgap measure is a one-time only, because employees will be looking at, and I don't think we should be having personnel costs out of reserves. So, that's number one, and I know you already addressed that. Number two, you said, you were talking about having, that we would end up having to increase taxes if we didn't do that? I think we could also look at cutting back on some of our expenses, that's the other issue that some people have. I would like to speak a little bit, if this will not address, and it does not look to me like it'll address the retention issues we have in the police department, we have a little bit, and granted, they get $500 extra, whatever it is, but that's not that much. If this doesn't address that, we need something, we don't need to kick this can down the road. We need to actually figure out how to incorporate whatever the STEP plan is, I think y'all talked about that before, or whatever it takes, for our tenured police officers, we can't afford to keep losing them. So, I think it's a terrible mistake to kick that can down the road. That's a can I want right here, right now, in this budget. So, and not me, I think our city needs that. We have to have a police force.
Sure. Okay.
So... I don't know if my other council members agree, but I think that's much more important.
I think everybody, we all agree, we all need a police force, so I don't think anybody says we don't. I think that the thing that we've got, you know, what we have before us regarding the STEP plan is, it's still a work in progress. We have to work through some of the details, we just have not had the time. And so, the programs that were presented at the last council meeting were done very much in conjunction with human resources, the police department, Police Chief Weems and Assistant Chief Police Terravella, and Pam Carbo, so our finance director. So, we believe it's a step in the right direction. Does it answer everything? It doesn't, but we believe that it's a step in the right direction. And so, if you all want to, within, and again, I don't want to, if we believe that we get further down the road on the STEP program, as far as we kind of iron out some of the details, we can certainly bring something back to council. It may not be in this budget cycle, but we can bring something back to council mid-year, well, I mean, or soon after the fiscal year begins and try to get some implemented. But if we don't have all the details worked out, it's just very difficult to be able to give you a solid recommendation on what to do, because it's a huge impact.
Well, maybe would you like some of us to go? Well, maybe would you like some of us to go and visit with the police department and maybe get some other people?
No, I really don't think so.
Talk to Adam Duncan to hurry this along.
No, I, I think, I mean, again, I think this is a staff operation that we can do and work with the police chief and his team, with the finance director and, and the HR director. So if you want to have that, do that, I mean, we can do that, we can provide you some estimates. It's just, again, what I've heard this evening is we need to address employee compensation. And not just the 823, that stopgap measure, we need to address employee compensation, bake that into the budget, and also do the step plan measure, and do some of the other new, new, newer programs that were described by Ms. Curvo at the last council meeting, Police Chief Weems. It's, it will be very expensive.
Well, and we still have to do it.
And then addressing as far as.
And not out of reserves.
And then addressing the cuts that need to be made. I need direction from council of what departments and what programs you want cut. What we submitted.
We need from you.
No ma'am.
To make it, yes, sir.
No, ma'am, we, I filed a budget, I filed a budget, and it's a budget that maintains operational expenses. And so the, the budget has been filed, it's really up to the council to determine what programs you don't want funded. I've recommended a budget per the charter, and it's in the council's court to tell us what it is you all want.
Mr. Canizares, I have asked several times that I would like a balanced budget. Taking money for personnel costs out of the reserves is not a balanced budget. So you need to provide us with a balanced budget and think about which things are going to have it be in there and which things aren't.
I'm the, the new guy at the table here. So I, I, I want to talk about process just a little bit, just because I don't have the background to, to know how the city is operated historically. I know, Ms. Curvo, you've done a fantastic job. I know you said about getting us these documents tonight was a challenge. So would it be, I'm really not talking about this year because we're here. For the future, would it make sense for us to not have our first council meeting in August be maybe the first two or three days? Could we move that to the second week and make your life easier?
Can I speak to that? So, so I'm bound by state law when I have to present a budget, but I'm also bound by the ability to receive property tax information. And so there was no balanced budget until literally 10 o'clock this morning. The thing is, is today was the date, the deadline for me to file a budget with the city secretary. And so I can't push that any further. Now, I can do it and just not present it to y'all till later, but I still have to have the budget done by, by a set date. The, the problem comes in that the state doesn't give us a lot of time. They say the appraisal districts are supposed to give us numbers by July the 25th. So they basically give me a week to try to balance a budget. And so we do a lot of this ahead of time, hoping that, that we get good numbers. This year, unfortunately, we still do not have a final say on our numbers. The appraisal district has done a lot, but the state also made some changes this year into how they do the appeals board process. And so in the past, what they would do is if there was a large, maybe an apartment complex or a large business that was under protest, they would be done first, because that's the larger values. And so it was easier for them to give us an estimate, a certified estimate of the value, taxable value, because most of the big things had already been discussed and, and the appeals process had been done and settled. Well, now the state has said, no, you can't do that, we want you to do the residential people first. And so there are all these, the board is having to hear all these hearings for the residential, so the big ones are left to the end. And the big ones are the ones that affect the way that, the ability for him to give us a certified estimate, because he has to give us an estimate within 5%. And that is very difficult to do when you have $300 million still under protest. And so that has been, that has been his challenge. And he's been, you know, working with the state trying to get a, a waiver for his certification being late. And so there's, there's multiple things that are, that are coming into play here. And so, you know, literally, this was the earliest that, that this could come together. And it's literally built on numbers that are going to change, because hopefully, my certification comes in Friday. If we get these ordinances to Jason and they get it to the software company by 9:30 in the morning, then hopefully, all the new exemptions will be allowed, and the certified numbers will be here hopefully by Friday. At that point, we'll recalculate and go through. But it's, it's just a process, and the state really handcuffed us on timing for all of this stuff. Yeah, it would be great to be able to do this earlier, it's just not possible, unfortunately.
So I guess then my question is, and, and I don't, I don't know if this is something that the council would be agreeable to, but it might be better for us to, to push that first meeting, even if it's a few days where we have a chance to review it. Because frankly, I don't have all the questions that I would want to ask you. And that's not your fault, you didn't have it until today. But being able to go through this and, you know, ask where those intergovernmental receipts come from and what that means, and as I go through this process multiple times, certainly I'll understand more, but.
Well, and I, and I would have to verify it, I'm not sure if it's in our charter or what. So the reason that, that y'all see this tonight, I have to file it with the city secretary, but I'm almost positive that it has to be, because now I have to present you with the tax rates. And so that's by law, I have to present it to you. And so that's why I was saying, as we go forward, you've got the information, you're going to have it pre. This one is just because of the deadlines that they gave us, this is going to be the one time that you literally walk in and I present it, and you're not going to, and that's why we don't ask for you to adopt on the, on the, on the first chance, because you haven't had a chance to look at it, and we understand that. As a matter of fact, the executive staff hasn't had a chance to look at it either. Mario, I've been telling him, but he hasn't had a chance to, I mean, literally 10 o'clock this morning, I finished this document. And so, yeah, I, I understand the frustration, and it's frustrating for me trying to put it together, but I have to, I have to stay within the confines of what the law says I have to do. And so I have to do it today, and then going forward, we can, we can, we're going to have all these budget workshops so that we can do this discussion as we go through the, the month of August.
For sure.
And we did, and we actually did have a budget workshop that we had potentially scheduled for the night. But we had people absent, and so it was canceled.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the intent was to provide it to you today, obviously ask your questions, give you the time that you needed to digest it, come up with more questions, but unfortunately, just we had two members absent, so it was.
I totally understand that. And any of my frustration is not to you, Ms. Curvo, or you, Mr. Canizares. It's just that I, I don't know, I don't know the questions that I need to ask, so. There will be some, I promise you.
More questions.
I did want to just go back to make sure. I really would like to see, we're not in any position to go line items. We, we don't do the details here. But we are in a position to say that we would like to see a budget, a draft of a budget, that doesn't rely on reserves to pay for personnel costs or whatever you want to call them.
So I understand that, that the reason those are, they're personnel costs, but they're not operational costs, because they're one-time expenditures. They're not added to the, the person's base rate, they don't affect anything in, as far as their, their pay rates, anything like that. The thing is, is we are, you're looking at $800,000 adding to an operational. I'm not sure that we can do it within the, the available voter approval rate, honestly. And $800,000 cut out of the general fund budget would be other personnel costs.
Sure, but let me just give an overview. We have spent months presenting all of these extra costs, all of the increased costs to people. And, and I would hope we would get, even at this point, something that would really assist the police department in their retention. And I believe the, I believe that's enough for the people who operate the vehicles, the, the, what is it?
CDLs.
CDL drivers, because those were the two that were highlighted. So we really do need to fix that. And we really do need a budget that addresses those particular things, because we're bleeding these positions right now. So we really need something that addresses that, and we don't need to take the costs out of reserves. So within that, I would hope we would have a proposed budget. And there might be things that we might not be able to do this year, we might not be able to incur.
So the CDL and the assignment pay are included in this proposed budget?
I see that.
So the only thing would be the one-time payment is not included in your operational budget?
Right.
So you're saying instead of doing a one-time payment, add that into their base rate and pay it ongoing?
Not to everybody, no.
Just police?
Well, I, I'm saying, you're, you're the manager, who are we losing, address that. I've, I've said enough, but I think we need a budget.
Go back to, if we have a department that doesn't have any vacancies, but there are some of our lower paid employees, do we need to affect them?
I'm saying you have, you have areas that you know you need to target.
Right.
So that needs to be included in the budget.
I just don't, I, I would, at this point, I, I know that we don't, there are certain areas that we have no vacancies, but potential is always there for that. And, and if there is a vacancy, we have to fill that vacancy. And in this day and age, the potential candidate is asking a lot higher wages.
Yes, sir.
Than what that person probably was making.
And that, and that is what, that is one of these, the things that we're looking at, is, is, it is expensive. It is expensive to try to keep, but we're trying to keep the, the, the knowledge base that we have. Because for me, for instance, my position, if I was to leave, to replace me, the market for me is much higher than, than, than what I make. And so at the end of the day, is it worth $1,300 to keep me or another $30,000 to hire my replacement? And so that's across the city, you're going to see that. And so that is, that was the impetus for this, was to try to stop some of the bleeding before it happens. We know what's happening in the police department. We are trying to not have this happen in every other department, because people are looking for other jobs. They really are, I promise you. I've had multiple employees in my department that are looking for other jobs, and they are not police officers. They are secretaries, they are, they're, they're every, they're in every facet of our, our, our organization. And so that was, that was really the thought process behind this, is to try to help bridge the gap for our employees, all employees, because every one of them are, are, are suffering through this, just like everybody else. But we don't want to lose some of that, that institutional knowledge that we've got with some of our longer tenured employees. With the police department, the $194,000 for the assignment pay, in conjunction with the $2,600 retention payment, we are very hopeful. Chief Weems and I, and Mario have all sat down. We know that money is not the only issue with the police department. There are other issues that, that people leave for very varied reasons. But we hope that with the sign-on bonus, that will help the retention, I mean, the recruitment, and with the assignment pay and the retention, that we can keep some of the, the longer tenured employees. And so that's, that's kind of the direction that we've gone with this proposed budget.
And if you look at the history, especially private companies, when you start selecting departments and you fund that department and not the other, that's an exodus.
It's a morale, it's a morale problem, it is, it does create a morale problem. Or the potential for one.
Anyone else, any other comments?
I had one, but I lost it.
Well, we can always come back to it. I don't mind jumping backwards.
All right.
All right, so let's jump to utility fund. So utility fund, in summary, revenues are just a little bit. This is pretty, our revenues in, in water and sewer are relatively stable year over year. 52% from water and 45%, yeah, 45% from sewer. I'm sorry, y'all, I'm getting older and blinder. So that, that sets the, the operational revenues for the utility department. The expenditures, when looking by classification here, you'll notice that personnel cost is 20%. Sundry charges, that is debt payments on existing bonds is 24%. Interfund transfers, that includes operational and franchise transfers to the general fund is 22%. And then contractual services, which is, includes electricity and supplies and materials, which includes fuel. So on the capital side here, the utility fund, of course, is set up differently than the general fund. And so we actually do have a depreciation account that we set aside and fund annually for replacement of our large equipment and any assets, as well as to fund whatever CIP projects that we can cash fund as we go through that. So for capital equipment, we had, the water production department had $300,000 worth of equipment requests this year. The utility construction had $482,000 worth of equipment, and wastewater had 372. Now, I did not list these because there's about 25, but just as an example, we had some upgrades on our SCADA system, was about $100,000. Major system repairs, turbidity sensors, whatever that is, replace alum pumps, vacuum pumps. So there's a lot of different components to the water production and wastewater treatment that are large expenditure items that are included in these things. Those are on page 13 of your budget, if you would like to look at the detail for that. The capital improvements, this is the annual ongoing CIP for water system. That includes just any miscellaneous water line repairs or developer incentives that we have annually. Wastewater, same thing. And then, of course, this year, as we discussed in April at our CIP meeting, the replacement of our AMI system. We are, we are, let's see, we installed that in 2008. And so we are hitting on the end of our life cycle for the, the warranty there. And so we want to make sure that we keep that system up and operating, because without it, we have a very difficult time billing that $20 million. So we want to make sure that we keep on top of, of those meters and that system to, to read them. That's all utility, so we have any questions there? I will, I will note that the, the utility fund, I know we've talked incessantly about the increase in fuel and electricity. The utility fund was the hardest hit for those, those electricity costs. It is extreme, bless you, is extremely expensive to, to provide electricity to a water plant. It doesn't shut down, they're running all the time, and they got big, big equipment running. And so we saw a rather, a large increase in, in the electricity cost for utility this, the fund this year. So that was, that was a little bit difficult in, in being able to, to make that operationally work. But we were able to make some pretty significant cuts within the departments to, to fund the majority of that.
Any questions on the utility fund, or do you want to go through sanitation fund and come, talk about both of them, or?
Just have one comment. Can you go back a couple of slides?
Yep. To revenues.
That's good, right there. I don't want to, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but can we make that chart larger so you don't have to squint to see the numbers?
Well, that's about as big as we can get it, unfortunately. It could probably get a little bit larger.
Just make the text bigger.
Yeah, it, it does, it does get a little difficult. I just need better glasses. I need time to go, no, I need time to go to the doctor.
The truth is, I struggle to see it too, so.
You need some glasses. All right, do we want to jump to sanitation?
I believe so.
Let's do it. So sanitation fund, there again, the, the majority of those 78% of those charges are from the charges on the utility bill that the, the citizens receive monthly. That is also a component of the fuel charges. Several years ago, we pulled the fuel charge out of the base rate for sanitation, because several years ago, fuel was fluctuating. And so that gives us the ability that, that fuel charge changes. If fuel goes up, then the rate goes up. If fuel goes down, then the rate goes down. Instead of having an artificially set flat rate, because we were seeing both times. We had one time that fuel was way lower in our fuel charges, where we were actually making a profit on that, and that's not what we're out to do. And so that's why we, we pulled that out, and that's a little bit of a separate item, and it tracks with the, with the cost of fuel that we actually spend. The landfill gate receipts makes up about 11% of the revenues at the. The landfill gate receipts makes up about eleven percent of the revenues at the, for the sanitation fund. So looking at expenditures by classification, you'll see that here, personnel cost is about thirty percent. Supplies and materials, which again, this includes fuel at nine percent. Maintenance of structures, five. Contractual services, and again, that includes the electricity is in there as well. And then the interfund transfers, which is for operating transfers as well as franchise transfers, are forty-two percent. When looking at capital for the sanitation fund, again, we do have a depreciation fund for this fund. And so annually, we try to replace at least a minimum of two garbage trucks. And so those are also there this year on the annual replacement, as well as a D six dozer that is needed at the landfill and a generator for the scale house at the landfill. Then on the CIP side, we have three million dollars set aside for new sale construction and five hundred thousand for a permanent amendment for the landfill. So that's, that kind of sums up sanitation. So just as a reminder, we did not increase premiums for dental and health for dependent insurance. Our employees are not seeing any increase in their premiums for dependent coverage for next year. Included in this budget, though, is a premium increase on the city's paid employee coverage from six sixty per employee per month to seven twenty-five per employee per month, which equated to a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional funding to the self-insurance plan for this year. As you recall, that is because we had a very high claim year this year. And so our expected claims for next year, of course, rose as well when we went out for bid. This does not include a COLA for employees. We were hoping to get through this year with that retention payment. And then hopefully with the next fiscal year, fuel hopefully will be back to normal. We will be on the last three months of our very expensive electric contract. So we're hopeful that we can relook at COLAs, our other employee adjustment, pay adjustments for twenty-three, twenty-four. This also includes additional employees that we discussed at the last meeting. The third-floor administrative person for City Secretary of Finance, as well as a part-time adoption officer or adoption coordinator at the animals shelter, a laborer at the sanitation disposal, which is landfill, and a part-time billing analyst in utility billing, as well as a reclassification to full-time for the parks, the city gardener that's downtown, which currently is a part-time position. And of course, again, significant, very significant increases to fuel and electricity are built into the budget for this year. So before we get to the budget calendar, you might want to go back if we had any more questions on the numbers. I don't want to confuse things any, or anymore.
So on your list of budget items to note, where can we see the reflection of these items within the main budget document?
Okay, so for health and dental, that is part of the personnel cost. So each department, their personnel cost, that is baked into their budget.
Baked in there.
So same thing with the additional employees. So we added in the cost for the salary and the benefits into each department. So for City Secretary, there was an addition for that employee as well as all those costs and vice versa for all of the other departments. And then, of course, the fuel and electricity is in each department's line item.
Perfect, thank you.
So, help me out here. How much is the total that this budget shows that we will be taking out of our reserves?
In which fund?
In all of the funds.
Well, we'll have to add them up. Hold on, let's go backwards.
Just tell me piece by piece.
Okay, so let's go back. So for general fund, that will be, take out the twenty million that's a CO. So that'll be the one point six plus the one point five, so there's about three point one, almost three point two million in general fund.
That'll come out of our reserves.
Out of reserves, uh huh. And then in utility fund, there's nine point two-ish. And then sanitation is four point nine.
Sanitation is four point nine. So that is a total of twelve and five, seventeen, over seventeen million dollars that we're taking out of reserves for our next year's budget.
For one-time expenditures, yes ma'am. CIP and capital.
Now, part of those are sinking funds.
Yes, the sanitation and the utility are, that's where those reserves come from. We set up each year, we fund depreciation to fund the replacement of everything we've ever bought.
Okay, so can we, so how much is the sinking funds? I'm just trying to figure out how much.
So in the utility fund, we have, after these, let me back up. After this nine million comes out, we're gonna have about eight million left in reserves in the utility fund. After this comes out.
Right, right. But how much are the sinking funds that we actually set aside to, that we planned on taking in?
All of this.
Okay, in the utility fund?
Yes, in sanitation fund. As we buy equipment, so here's what we do. We buy a dozer. Every year, we depreciate that dozer over a ten-year period and we set aside that money so that when it comes up for replacement, the money's there.
Okay, so I mean, I understand putting aside money rather than borrowing to do it, which I always think is a great saving versus borrowing. In the general fund, then, the three point two million?
Yep.
That is in addition then, or is any of those part of a sinking fund?
So the general fund works a little bit differently. And so the only place that reserves can come from in the general fund is when we over-collect revenues or under-expend expenditures. And so each year, we can build reserves based on how we did. So like this year, sales tax is just booming this year. And so we're probably gonna have over a million dollars' worth of additional revenue over what we had budgeted. So that is part of what is going to go add to this year's reserves. Now, if expenditures come in over budget, then that deducts from that. And so, but each year, that's where the general fund reserves come from. There's no funding mechanism for reserves in the general fund like it is in utility and sanitation. And so those general fund reserves are built based on whatever we've had over the last several years of additional revenues or unspent expenditures.
So the three point two million? You said we have an additional one million in taxes, so we're spending two points?
Say that again?
How much are we spending more than the revenue that we're?
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with revenue.
But you were just talking about taxes, additional tax revenue.
On sales tax, that is what funded the reserves. So every year, as we go, if we over-collect on what, so if I undershoot our budget, I'm always very conservative, especially on sales tax, because we have no control, we don't know what's gonna happen with sales tax. This year, coming off the heels of the pandemic, we budgeted sales tax at seven million dollars. We are going to end the year over eight million dollars. That is an additional million dollars that we did not fund in the current budget that is going to add to the bottom line, okay? So that adds to reserves. Now, any of our expenditures, same thing happens there. If I say, well, this year, fuel was supposed to be a hundred thousand dollars, but guess what? We didn't bank on four dollar fuel. And so we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars. So even though I'm adding a million, I'm taking another hundred thousand out. And so at the end of the fiscal year, any additions minus any overages, that's what adds to that reserves. So these three million dollars, we currently have about, well, I can't tell you exactly. I don't have to tell you about. Back up. So, whoops, wrong way. So we will have, right now, three point, what was that, three point two, four, five? We got about six and a half million dollars over our reserve requirement, which if you understand, we have to remember, we have twenty-five percent of our operating budget that we have to hold in reserve, which is about seven million dollars. So we have that seven that's set aside that we don't touch unless we have an emergency. And then we have an additional six million on top of that. This is six and a half. We're asking of that six and a half that's over, these are the items that we want to fund from there.
Sure. And last year, what did we have and what were we, what are we going into this year?
I don't have last year's budget with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, so I'm trying to figure out if we're depleting our reserves more with this budget than we did.
So, yes, well, I can answer that without having that. So here's the thing, we did not spend a lot of reserves year before last. Because of COVID, we stopped all expenditures. And so last year, we had, we had some expenditure request, but there's a lot of our equipment, you were asking earlier about how, why this reserves, what their intent is for. The intent here is to replace all of our equipment in the general fund. Utility fund has a depreciation account that is set aside for this. But any vehicles, any tractors, mowers, all those types of things that normally would be depreciated in a different fund, that's what these are for, okay? And so that's what a lot of this that you'll see under the capital equipment and projects is for. Now, historically, we normally, we try to never get close to that twenty-five percent. We want at least a million or two over that. Now, years and years ago, we got down really low and we only had like a million over our required reserves. But we have, we have not spent any money. We have foregone a lot of these equipment replacements, a lot of the improvements. And so we have built up some monies because we haven't spent in the last couple of years. And so this basically, yes, it looks like a high year for us, but it's basically making up for the last three years of not having a million, a million and a half the last three years that we normally would have had, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm totally for spending our reserves on equipment and all the things they were intended for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the calendar.
Let's do it. Okay. So the next meeting, of course, is August the sixteenth. We're going to have another budget workshop, so come prepared with all your questions. We also will that night vote on a proposed tax rate. Now, this is in parentheses, you'll see, maximum. This is a new, probably this is, might be the third year that the state implement this. When they did, went through the Senate Bill Two, this is part of the transparency that they wanted to add to the budget, I mean, to the property tax setting process. And so this is not voting to adopt a tax rate. This is just voting for a proposed tax rate and it will not exceed that. So whatever we vote then, we can go below that, we just can't go above it. And so honestly, now, with the unknowns with the property tax rates, that's why the sixteenth is, we're hopeful we will have property tax numbers from the appraisal district and we will have good numbers for y'all that night. Now, that will be the night that we just say, this is the property tax rate that we are going to go as we build the budget and come back to you in September. This is the max. It cannot go above this. And so it can go below. It's just a new, one-piece, really, doesn't do anything other than advertises what property tax rates are considering, okay? Then we actually are asking for a separate special meeting on the twenty-fifth of August, which is a Thursday. This, we want to have one more budget workshop. As Mario mentioned earlier, we did have to cancel the August the ninth workshop. And there's a lot to this and we want y'all to have ample opportunity to give us some feedback. So we do want to have one additional workshop before we come back to actually ask for y'all to vote on the budget in September. We also, that night, will need finalization on what particular projects and amounts that y'all want to issue the CO for. As you will see, the next item is I meet with the bond rating agency on September the second and that is when we have to set the final projects and amount of CO issuance. And so that August the twenty-fifth meeting is gonna be very important for us to get some direction on the CO projects as well as the amounts of each of those projects.
Are you asking us right now, was this already the August twenty-fifth date?
No, this is new.
Are you asking us right now if we're available on August? Mr. Bolden, would you unzip my purse?
Any of these dates, we'd want to see if you're available for, for the dates.
I think we, these other ones are already, thank you so much.
Thirteenth is gonna be a new one also, I believe.
It was actually there, it's just a special meeting now that the state requires us to do the budget and the tax rate within seven days of each other, so we always have to add an additional meeting in September.
Because I have the thirteenth on my calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of these I think we have. August twenty-fifth.
It's a Thursday, I believe.
I did not have that one.
No, that is new as of today.
So you're competing with the comprehensive plan visioning? Is that correct?
I have, I'm sorry, I do not know.
Okay.
Is that, will that not work?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the comprehensive, I guess DTJ is coming. I don't know.
So what time is that? Could we work on timing?
We're not told those things, so.
Did that get moved? When is DTJ going to be here?
Isn't it in the morning also?
They're here over the course of a two-week period, so, not straight two weeks, but over a two-week period.
Two-day or two-week?
Over a two-week period.
That, but that August twenty-fifth, is that a significant?
Let me find out the times on that. Let me just check if you.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll revisit that in just a second when he gets an answer on that. So the next item there, of course, is for me to meet with the bond rating agency on September the second and that is when I have to give them the final projects and amounts for the CO issuance. And then, of course, September the second, I mean, sixth is our normal scheduled meeting. We will have the public hearing on the budget that night. You can opt to vote to adopt the budget that night or you can vote to table it until the thirteenth. It doesn't, it doesn't have any bearing on anything. We normally try to do it on the same night as the tax rate, but we perfectly can go ahead and adopt it on the sixth. New state law, we have to do those within seven days of each other, which is the requirement for the September thirteenth meeting on that night. If we did not adopt the budget on the sixth, that will be, needed to be done first because the budget has to be adopted before the tax rate. Then we will have the public hearing on the tax rate. And then, of course, the adoption and the ratification of the tax rate on the thirteenth, followed by the second regular scheduled meeting in September is when the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the COs will take place. And so that will be just a basically a follow-up after the sixth and thirteenth, when the budget is set and the tax rate is set. And then the ordinance, of course, is just a legal thing to get the issuance done so that they can actually sell by, I think, October the thirteenth. Do we have any other questions other than the August twenty-fifth until we hear back?
I figure it'll be during the day, so I think you can go ahead with that. And I don't know what they're gonna do. I mean, for me.
Do we have a preference on timing for that? Do we need to decide that tonight? I don't know.
I think you should, I mean, all of these, I think, should be held at five-thirty, so if people want to come.
If you can, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
Do we need action on?
So what I will need now is a little, yes, I'm gonna need some direction on what exactly you want me to bring if anything changes between now and the sixteenth. So if we want to take the retention payment out of reserves and move it into operations, then I need to know to do that and set a tax rate based on that additional eight hundred thousand dollars in expenditures.
Well, first of all, you haven't heard, nobody in the city, the people who live here, who pay the taxes, have not been able to have any input into this because it's just been presented today. So to tell us what we need to be doing on this budget, I mean, just as it's unfair to ask you to bring it the day before, it's unfair to ask us to tell you what our conclusions are about what to do with this.
So I can bring this exact budget back on the sixteenth and we can discuss it more then and then we can change it after there.
Well, I already asked, I just would like to see a balanced budget.
This is balanced. This budget is balanced.
Without reserves, without using the reserves.
The reserves, I'm sorry, but the reserves have nothing to do with balancing the budget. But the operating budget is balanced. Reserves are a separate thing.
Yeah, right. Not if those things are important. The things that were included to be spent out of reserves, if those things are important, which they are, then I think we need to have a balanced budget that includes whatever it is for employee. I think we need to.
Which was my question, do you want me to include those and include the tax increase?
Not for the tax. I think it needs to be included even, maybe give us a couple. One is a.
I can't, I can't file more than one budget. By law, I file a budget. I can't give you multiple-choice budgets. I'm sorry. It's just, I have to file a budget.
Is, is there a way for you and Pam possibly to meet and to try to figure out where that, that place is? You're trying to get us to?
Tomorrow morning. I'll be back by.
Okay.
Yes. Twenty-fifth, five-thirty would work, if that's okay with y'all.
Do you, do you need action on H or, or is it just?
No, 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 no.
It's just said, okay. Okay. Anything else?
So I'm bringing this budget back on the sixteenth and then we're going to go from there.
I think so. And if council people want to talk to you, they may, you may hear from them.
Perfect.
By phone or one-on-one.
Sounds good.
All right, nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, no, no, no. We got, we got another item. The, yeah, the, setting the tax rates, I mean, the public hearings.
So what, I asked you, do we need action on that?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the budget. We hadn't got to, I'm sorry, yeah, no. There's another item. I didn't know what.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, we were on G. No take backs? So the last thing is, I'm sorry, no, we were on G then. So eight, no, you're good. We, we've talked a lot tonight, so we're all confused. So this is just an action item to actually set the public hearings for the budget and the tax rate for September the sixth and September the thirteenth.
Okay. Any discussion? Have a motion, we set those dates?
So moved.
Moved to second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sing a saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.